And uh, while it's going on, it's not too good, reflections, I'm not gonna talk about the good and bad. Not so good it's happening. I'd just like to show my team, uh, call them, pulling in at some point. Those of you who were able to take part in the Memorial Day service, we've got, what a nice, we're kind of concerned about the weather, the nature really helped out. Well, given the strong help, uh, before the flax, and thank you if I miss anybody, so those come on out. And Jamie and his crew really happy, seven, they're looking wonderful, so, uh, that'll be our thing for the evening. And uh, since our financials are off the rock.
It's the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those of you who have a conscious potential, see the, the, or lack of knowledge, this meeting is made, uh, according to the permission purposes. Does nobody mean person, one day, everyone, or all of us, if you can't address a person, why do someone need?
Um, I'd like to ask the trustees, uh, for, uh, motion to accept the minutes of the meetings of April and May, but I don't think I do.
Yeah, I get it. I make a motion to accept the minutes of the meetings of April and May.
One second.
Questions?
And, all right, trustee, so, Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
And Mrs. Debbins, yes. I also like to ask the trustees for a motion to accept the payment of April bill in the amount of, three hundred and thirteen thousand, eighty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Like to make a motion to give those monthly bill of the amount of three hundred and thirteen thousand, eighty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Sixty-eight cents, again.
One second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Uh, Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Debbins, yes, and Mr. Suttles?
Yes.
Um, I'd also like to ask the trustees for an exception to the financial statements that I gave you on May fifteenth.
I'll make that motion to accept the financial statement that provided on May fifteenth, as we were, we were requested actually.
One second.
Any discussion? Not just the fact that I could appreciate it, I know it was mid-month. Roll call please.
Uh, Mrs. Debbins, yes, Mr. Suttles, Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we are playing here in the meeting.
At this time, we will take, uh, comments, publicly, specifically on the agenda items. Agenda items only, if you have comments other than going to agenda, we will address those toward the end of the meeting. So, yeah, are there any questions on agenda items? Okay, same time, then, uh, we will move on to our chief trustee.
Thank you. All right, for the month of May, your officers respond to six hundred and five calls, resolving in eighty-eight reports, of those, three were crash reports and eighty-five incident reports. Twenty-nine arrests were made for the month, of those, one was drug-related, uh, two fire-related charges. Two people arrested in regards to thefts, break-ins, burglaries. Four arrests were made for assaults, domestic violence, or protectional violations. Two arrests for resisting, fleeing, or obstructing, eight more arrests were made. Fifty-seven traffic citations were issued, of those fifteen, were for driving on suspended or without license. Uh, two miscellaneous equipment offense citations, and eleven miscellaneous new, uh, offense citations issued. One OBI citation and one distracted driving citation for the month. We had eighteen speed, as well as six C cell or child arrest citations issued. Uh, we also during the month of May, uh, participated in the national quicker ticket. We have reported for the month, one, or five break-ins, burglaries, eight assault or domestic violence. One criminal trespass, and eight bail lists or criminal damage caused. Nine thefts reported, three identity thefts, uh, one sex crime was reported, four arrests, and four arrest, domestic violence. We have one overbath, and our officers responded to seven calls of a certain animal bite. Investigated thirteen incidents of suspicious activity, as well as three suspicious persons and twenty-two suspicious vehicles. Officers responded eighty-four service calls, investigated seventeen traffic animal parking complaints. Your officers assisted ten disabled motorists, and responded seventeen animal complaints and twenty-six alarm rooms. Your officers patrol thirteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-three miles using eight hundred and forty-eight point eight gallons of fuel. We had thirty-eight point five hours of reimbursed overtime for May, as well as one hundred and sixteen hours of regular overtime. Uh, that was training, we have Memorial Day and ship coverage as, uh, Officer Elly, Elson, and left us in the month for job with that. Uh, total overtime hours for the month was one hundred and fifty-four point five, and that's all for the report, if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Yes. Right, and with Officer Bell, Bell, uh, Elba Bellis leading us, uh, Detective Sergeant Pacific, uh, Sergeant Bean, to work quickly, uh, put information out, uh, interviews, backgrounds, and as you have suggested tonight, Brian, I want you to put you up front and center, if you want to stand up front here, on a little bit of that. Uh, so we're looking for a resolution to hire Ryan Free, as a full-time patrol officer, effective June fourth, twenty twenty-four. As per the OPBA contract, which would be at eighty percent of patrol salary. Ryan's twenty-six-year-old, with a strong, friendly personality, lived in Dodge, Dodge, like. Uh, she is engaged, that's an eighteen-month-old daughter, she's probably thirty-two. Ryan served in the Army Reserves, uh, up through last year. He worked, uh, for Hunsell, until the plant closed, and decided to change careers, uh, taking up law. He went to Youngstown State University Police Academy, and we are proud to say we are the first partisan hire, so he can start his life, which can start with us. So, Ryan, thank you, trustees, like, this is all our solution.
Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion, we hire Ryan Free, as a full-time patrol officer, effective June fourth, which is March, uh, twenty twenty-four, eighty percent as per the OPBA contract.
Okay, is there any additional discussion before we take the roll call over?
I'd just like to welcome you up through, we're gonna kind of shake your hand, and I'm glad that you're going to be, uh, your police department, you're out of the academy. Hopefully you'll stay with us as long as Chiefustina.
More long.
Say more longer.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Suttles?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
All right. I'm welcome. Same thing.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Chief, uh, am I right in this order tomorrow, or?
Yeah. All right, item two was discuss the portable power center, so, as I guess we transitioned away from using that unit, we've got the two generators that we picked up on that ten thirty-three program. Got our page works, so they're now off, and we can actually put those on, go. Uh, we discussed keeping the thirty-three AW smaller, uh, just because you could have interruptions to gas, gas lines. That one's decent capability, so it fits us without taking up a lot of space, uh, but to put larger one on W, so, so they're, you're not coming to confuse.
I'd like to ask you, your opinion, we have the options of, we can't sell it out, of course, no. We could go to, we could see if there's interest locally, and take bids, but do you think we'll get a better bang for our buck on my?
Yeah, we traditionally, when we put that, change the W, because that market, it's really open that up, we get that out there. And the reason I put on there is, we typically, when we put stuff out, very rarely do we put these on the line, sometimes long, I would, uh, think you've got a couple of times on there. But I would look to set three, uh, probably forty-five thousand for that here. So, that's the reason for putting that on, we're not confused, it's just gonna take up.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, we, we need to have a discussion, now, do you think we should wait until we get our generators ordered, so that we can offer what we have, to take our existing generators out?
Uh, because you're gonna use stuff, or you're gonna, because they're from market for a unit like that, they are a used.
Natural gas.
Yeah, small, all right, those are questions, the one that's here, that's gonna be taken out, was put in, it's, ninety, ninety-three, ninety-four?
Yeah, it's right about there, yeah.
Yeah, so ninety-three or nine-one-four was put in, that's the original, one that, ten minute, we still have dispatch. So we got the years on to it, but that's old, I know, our, place, uh, character, that was five, eight, eight years old, maybe.
Eight years.
Maybe not.
Okay, that's my, yeah, they're, they're good from market.
What does a cost that, a one hundred thousand?
Uh, I'm gonna estimate from the research on about two twenty-five.
And the one that sold, does that, if I can go to the general fund, or is that through the police?
Did we go into the police fund, uh, but?
I tried.
But we would, uh, there was stroke money in pickup, so we would take care of that, and that, uh, I would think that's air, deep funds, that we have. Those generators checked, looking at towards that, so to look at, can you put that, that?
No, I don't believe we can, I talked to lady counsel, uh, telling her what we had decided to do, and I don't believe you can switch right, that note back and forth, that's just where we're at.
Our intent, we've discussed with that money, is we have that two thousand and five pickup, that's starting, we'll show its age, we got that circus program, it's nice. But we had it for a long time, just getting the best of it, so, to replace a utility like that, we have.
So you need?
Uh, I think we're best, just because we're doing set of reserves, to put that on, cut deals, set up a resolution, do that, set three zero, forty-five thousand.
Do you wanna do that tonight?
If you wanna consider, you'll put that up.
Go ahead and share the word, if you would like that to, you might feel that, can you, sir, cut deal, okay?
So I'd like to make a motion to put the portable power center on cut deals dot com, for forty-five thousand, please, sir.
I'll say it. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Uh, Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Debbins, yes, Mr. Suttles?
Yes.
All right, and the only other thing I have was, uh, that I put on, I'm not really agenda, but we got, uh, sent mail, May twenty-first, we got ended with a month, we had a hearing with liquor, uh, board over, uh, objection to a liquor licensing, uh, from the township, and they hold in our favor against the liquor licensing. We didn't get that, so, if you didn't get that, send mail list.
Anything, chief, anything else?
That is all I have for my last.
You sure you want anything else instead?
I'm just, thank you, Jim.
Well, I don't have anything to say, like you said, we'll mention it later, but Chiefustina, uh, you served us well, and I really appreciate your reports every month, but thorough, uh, sometimes are eye-opening, especially how many miles are with officers in control. Uh, I appreciate, uh, everything you've done with this group, I'm, of course. Our chief.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. For the month of May, we ran two hundred and nine emergency calls, of those, a hundred and sixty-nine were EMS. There were two structural fires, ten motor vehicle crashes, one miscellaneous fire, fourteen service calls, nine reports of wires were trees down. Four fire alarm investigations, we had mutilated into the township twelve times, and we went out of the township fifty-four times, totaling to two hundred and nine. We used five hundred and sixty-four point four gallons of fuel, total. Station eighteen's kitchen remodel is in progress, as we speak, new front door was installed today, I think Jamie's gonna relate to that a little bit. Rescue eighteen is out of service at, uh, DNT PM and repair, for fuel tank repair, a primer cable. And the ten new tires that, uh, were approved last month were placed on engine eighteen within the line. That's all I have.
Just, just calling on the, uh, I had thirty calls.
Yeah, there were sixteen calls total in Hartford, and thirty in Vienna. That's included in the two, I mean.
Just, uh, you know, you know, that brings to our staff, you know, and, you know, I'm talking to you, our friends in Vienna, having a hard time. And, uh, we're gonna do, and help them, and fire department, police department, leadership, thank you so much, uh, you know, you never know, that progress with the D, so thanks for stepping up and, for helping as long as we can, that's a position I most want to be in, so, thank you, talking about, we'll be on, call will be here, I know it's great, I appreciate it, so thank you very much.
On that, no, um, we are cognizant of the number of runs we're going there, uh, we wanna help our neighbor. Uh, and I met with Phil Paye, um, last month, and the administrator, uh, concerning the subject, and letting them know that, we will help them as much as we can, as a good neighbor, uh, trying to see if there's, where the end is, which they don't know at this point, how far down the road that will be. But I checked with our chief, and as long as it doesn't, uh, take away from residents of Brookfield, we're willing to, do anything and everything, anything and everything we can to help our neighbors, so, we did keep that dialogue open between them. I'm glad that we're not in that position, but I think if we were, they would reach out to us the same way, so, we've done that, letting them know that, uh, we got their back.
Will say, thank you.
Yeah, I have something to add to this. I need to know if you want to place it on now. I need a motion from the trustees to allow me to enter no contract with DTP on the repair to replace brake pads, drums, and associated parts of Rescue 18 that cost of $4,017.94.
This, I think we discussed earlier, this lawsuit is within your maintenance budget.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the fire chief to enter contract. DTP.
Just make a check.
DTP on a truck repair LLC for some brake pads.
Brake pads.
$4,017.94.
I'll say it. Any additional discussion? Just the fact that you put brakes in a car, it's less than that, but that's maybe bigger weight wise. You said it's been a number of years since any of that.
I don't know when the rear brakes were done last month. It was fire to me.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Mrs. Devitts, yes, Mr. Suggles, Mr. Ferrer.
Yes. Thank you. That's all I have for this evening.
Road report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Road report for the month of May. Regular hours work. We had eight hundred overtime hours. We didn't have any of the road department. Eleven overtime hours at the cemetery, primarily sadly we put up flags for the veterans. This lady's overtime, we had nine hours. That was the scrap tire drive. Total hours, eight hundred and twenty. Of that, we had thirty in the administration, one hundred and fifty in routine road maintenance, primarily doing some patching. And we cut the grass along roads, berm mowing. Sixty hours equipment maintenance repairs. Most of that was the crater, brakes. And we had some work on toral motors and the little toral dump that we got from the police department. Cemetery, we had three hundred and sixty hours, two cremation and two cremations and two burial. Twenty-two hours of shop time. This lady's fifty hours. That was mowing the administration dome, the green, the highway, the air long road, and the flags around the center. Road information, four hours safety training. We had four hours. That was grass cutting and motor safety. Park, we had a hundred and forty hours. Fuel consumed. Road department used seventy-three point three gallons of gasoline, forty-nine point five gallons of diesel fuel. Cemetery used a hundred and seventy-eight point five gallons of gas, forty-five point five gallons of diesel fuel. Park used thirty-nine point nine gallons of gas. So no questions on that. I'll move to item one on the agenda. Item one, we need to end the payment contracts. We had two contracts. One was a grant project and one was a loan. They were bid out through the county, but even though we still have to award them through the board. So that's what we're going to do now. So I have the contracts here. So what I'd like you to do is you can make a motion, do it, and sign it at your leisure while we're still going through the.
Are you going to separate?
Yes, we're going to do two separate motions. So the first motion. Well, it's written there. So this is the, it sounds kind of convoluted, but this is the actual name of the project. So this is legal name of the contract. So you have to redo the motion and then the amount. Just so you know, both contracts were awarded to real contractors.
So you need that word, you have the word to be read or.
Yes.
All right. I'd like to make the motion more to Gulf Drive, Spring Road, Wintergreen Drive, et cetera. Road improvement grant project, real contractor team of five oh five Bedford Road, Worthville, Ohio, four 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 zero three. At the bid price of six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seventy-seven dollars.
I'll say it.
Any additional discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Suggles?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Devitts, yes. I'd like to make a motion to award Hubbard Thomas Road, Upper Road Street, et cetera. Road recap loan project, real contractor team of five oh five meter road, Worthville, Ohio, four 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 zero three. At the bid price, one ninety-six hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
I'll say it. Any additional discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Devitts, yes, Mr. Suggles.
Yes.
Before we go to the next motion, just to remind us, that's going to equate to about thirty roads throughout our township and approximately eighty miles paid. And again, that's a thank you to citizens of the Brooklyn Township passing that road. That is going to make a difference forever. I see this lot of pride. You're going to have best roads in the township and the community part of that. And again, thank you to everyone. I know that everyone voted that supported this because it's a challenge, but it passed. And it's going to change the township in a very, very good way. If we pay that amount of roads, like forty-three miles of roads, flat top roads, that we have swallowed before. So every year, we have five hundred thousand dollars to go toward that. So we're going to see some good roads that we can get something. Thank you. And what I would like to add is twenty-eight roads, think of that. I mean, it might not all be long roads, but just twenty-eight roads we have paid. I think how many years would have taken under our old system to do twenty-eight roads could we have given none of it?
No, we, prior to that, we had paid three years ago.
So we're able to do, that's just far reaching. I mean, it sounds like we bring it out every month and this is a big deal, but it is. And it affects our safety forces. It affects our school district. Buses have to go over those roads, our safety forces, if there's an emergency. But this is letting that, and in fact, we got a one point six seven million dollar loan, zero percent interest to move us up in the process to do that all in one year. And our roads are protected. It's a lot of credit for us. And we had fifty thousand dollars prior to letting pass the driveway.
So real quick, we'll get after all these are completed towards the end of the year, Jamie, I'll sit down and we'll rekindle the memory. Roads will be, obviously we're fast forwarding until 2020 might be in the plan. So and there's some other things up on that list. We'll move it around. And we'll repost this so everybody kind of knows where your road is now on the list. So we'll have that on the website towards the end of the year.
Okay, so I'm going to pass the contract. Now there's several things. So I've got a tab. So I'll start with easy and trustees can sign, they can sign by hand. She's got to sign. She's got to swear we asked. Okay, item number three, and I'm going to go into that and the fourth here. So let me make sure your agenda falls. So as part of the twenty-year plan, we agreed to work on unacceptable roads. So the unacceptable roads require a forward motion for us, for the road department to work on those roads. And it requires a unanimous vote. So what I'm asking trustees to do is make a motion on allowing the road department to do work, limited work and as time permits on these roads. And the roads are listed, I gave you, they were listed on the twenty-year plan on the website. But I also sent you the original one that I pulled those roads from. So.
Jamie, could you just kind of describe what nothing more means that grading?
Well, grading, adding, we're going to do some of our buildings. We're going to grade the roads and if we need to do any drainage.
Is it only paid at this time?
No.
Down the road.
Yeah, that is going to, the first one will probably take place next year.
So we're not going to remove any of these roads and put them on a dedicated list, instead of listing these processes.
Well, right now, I just want to be able to do some work on some of the roads that we've had.
Is that a goal?
Yeah, I think that was, that was. We'll then discuss. We're going to, so this summer, we should, we've got to sit down and come up with the criteria and put those roads on a schedule so we know which ones we're going to do. So we can get ahead as far as trying to get ready for paying. And then we got to get the process we're working with the county, make sure we follow the processes that's outlined to have them accepted. So they're finally accepted and there's no more of this, you know, unacceptable accepted roads.
And that's one of the things.
That's the goal I think.
I'd like to make a motion that we perform limited work on unacceptable roads as time permits. The roads eligible for this work are listed in the twenty-year plan. There's fourteen of those. And we can make a motion and then I'd like to.
Sure.
Yeah. So I make that motion.
I'll say it.
Additional discussion? Yes, I'd like to just read these before we cast the ballot. And some of these you may know or may not. I'm just going to read the street. It goes from one end to the other. So I'll just read from Old Bailey to Dead End. Out of the street number two, from Mead Street, Dead End. Rebecca Street, Old Eighty-two, Dead End. Those are the crossroads. Wheeler Street, from Boyd to Brighton. Mead Street, from Linden Street to Brighton. Brightview Avenue, from Old Eighty-two to the Dead End. Diamond Street Extension, from Boyd Street to the Dead End. Atlante Street Extension, from Boyd Street to the Dead End. Pacific Street, from Linden to the Dead End. Gloria Street, Sharon Road, the Dead End. George Street, from Gloria Street to the Dead End. Hobbit Court, Addison Road, the Dead End. Cherry Street, Route Seven, Dead End. And Willow Street, Route Seven. Roll call please.
Mr. Suggles?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Devitts, yes.
Okay, and now I want to do the backup for what I just. So the plan is at this point is mid-July to start some of this construction work. Just just didn't talk to them. So mid-July, probably they're going to probably focus on the grants project. This would be first, it would be Value View, Gulf Drive, those developments there. I think some of the roads inside the Value View estate are part of the second one. I would assume that they're going to do those roads in here. That's the will. And we're working with the county, internal county, they now figuring out the manual covers because of certain manual covers, thirty-nine manual. They're going to identify the right size. So there's some things we're working on, but that's tentatively, that's the schedule at this point. Stan, do you want to do the?
Yes, and I'm in your direction.
Yeah.
Several years ago, our trustee, for whatever reason, we're overwhelmed with the requests or whatever maybe Jamie could add to that. They made a motion to not purchase or install any children at play signs in there. I don't know if there were overwhelming amount of requests. Was that the reason?
No, I think if, there was some of that, but I think a lot of it was funding because they just didn't feel. But that was a factor and so they cut back on the costs.
So what we've done in the past, since I've been trustee, I say that word, is that if a resident wanted one of those signs put up, if the resident bought the sign, we would install them. And I can say that I know in one neighborhood, I bought two signs. Trustee Devitts, of course, trustee bought a sign. But we've had that request quite a bit. I had my, our last meet with the trustee meeting, individual on, I think it was Amy Quill. Had some concerns. So what we have to do is do we have to rescind the motion that was passed previously or not?
Yeah, you should, just as part of the motion.
And then make a motion that we do, because I believe that's a good idea. Some people might think, well, I think it's going to make a difference if I sign up. People are going to, but if somebody's not in, not from the neighborhood or through the area, they might throw that a little bit more if they see that sign. So at the cost of the sign, I think it's a good idea. So I'd like to make a motion first, we rescind the old motion that disallowed trustees from purchasing children.
Yeah, I think the last, the way they did it was the resident, whoever wanted the sign, had to purchase the sign and the post. And the road department would install it. So yeah, I like that motion.
Okay, I'll say it.
Additional discussion? Roll call please.
Okay, Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Devitts, yes, Mr. Suggles.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow purchase of children replace signs as needed. And I'd like us to start in few quarters ten.
I'll say it.
Any additional discussion on the motion? No, just that it says as it's needed. Okay, so. Just so it's like anything else, if it becomes where we have, you know, under request, we would have to revisit. But I think at the price that it's, to make our neighborhood safer, let's give it a shot. Thank you. Roll call please.
Mrs. Devitts, yes, Mr. Suggles.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Jamie, is that just an aggravation?
Yeah, I'd like to let you know that we, the door, the front door, our building, it's a fire building. Now, Dave and I talked, we might, we might only have enough closure or something along that because we're afraid it's going to fly. Fly over. We had to put the closure, we worked the door. So we're going to, I'm going to talk to the installer and see what that can say.
Does that leave other things?
Yes, it still has the, and it's safe, so. If you have to go, it's still good. And I think you already hit on the next one more a little bit. I just wanted to thank all the volunteers that did come out to the cemetery on Saturday and helped. It went well. I mean, the weather cooperated, stayed dry, it went well. So everything, all the better flags in, and I appreciate all the help that you've done. So thank you. It's the rest of the world. That's all I have for the road and I'm going to move to the park.
Before you move there, I think this could probably go anywhere. During our department meeting, there was a discussion because of the renovations that were done at the bank of all. Whether we had contracted to have the air conditioning units maintained regularly basis, I thought we had. So I received a quote from one vendor who's been doing it. We can do one of two things. We can have this vendor do it as a charge. If you want to be, get over another vendor.
Yeah, I'd say it was get two paid.
I don't want to release the price.
I mean, if you get two, I'd say.
So that was just to get the?
This was, he gave the price to get us up to stuff on all three buildings.
I was going to say. Okay.
Just one or two.
So, so the next item is the park. I just want to let you know the automatic door locks were installed on all three bathrooms. So, and I don't see, I, June is on here.
I talked to her today. She's very, she's very happy. She appreciates.
So just if there's something, if something goes haywire, let me know. I was going to tell her, just let me know. They haven't had any issues with it. So we, I mean, we haven't had, I hadn't heard anything yet. Okay, so we were good. Yeah, and I didn't look into the item. The fuel tanks. So as you know, the fuel tanks are going to be getting installed pretty quick. I ordered, or I contacted Centurion, it was our fuel supplier. They brought two temporary tanks now. They're sitting on the east side of the whole barn. So this is mainly for the other departments. They're five hundred and twenty gallon tanks. So what we're going to do is we're going to transfer fuel from the tanks that are there now and fill up the temporary tanks. And we will use whatever fuel is left in us. We need to use the tanks that are there in the house to empty those tanks. Our goal is to try to get those tanks empty and then have the temporary tanks there. So once we get, start using the temporary tanks. You guys have day.
We'll go back to the tables.
Yeah. So Dave, we need to come up with a sheet so we can have the best signs. There is a, there is a cage on the last one. What vehicle? So we'll come up with that. I'll tell Pete, he's on here really good. I'll tell him. So we're hoping they're going to start on the tanks this week. I don't know how much fuel we have to get out of it.
You were touching on the recycling.
Yeah, well, we, the recycling bin is going to be changed in the long. They're, they have new service, so.
They're basically going to change it publicly?
No, no.
Remember, we're going to move the bins.
Yeah, we're going to, there may be a lapse, so we may have the current bins that are there, they still be there, they're ready to be moved. But Dave said we could put the other ones, whatever ones we need, we'll put in front of the fire when it comes to storage.
So don't use that.
Yeah, what all that? Well, I don't know how they're going to do that, but it's all the way, so probably.
Yeah.
With that, yeah, that's going to happen for the long run. That's all I have.
Roll call please.
Okay. Always. Chuma Kelly, building permits issued since last meeting, nine hundred or nine and a half years, that's a small go. They, commercial, they're still in part of it. They's approved. There were complaints, eight forty-five Hobbit Court, ongoing trash and debris problem. Property manager has corrected. Fifty-five eighty-nine Amy Boyle, general condition of the property. Eight one seventy-three Admin Street, trash and front yard, hall department is assisting. Seven ninety Thurl Street, high grass. Sixty-four seven Simon Street, high grass. Thirty-eight one Bedford Road, high grass. Thirty-eight five Bedford Road, high grass. Sixty-nine seventy-nine Orange Sham Road, whose offense complaint. Four thirty-three Cleveland Street, general condition of property. Seven forty-one Hayward Street, trash and debris. Fifty-six eighty-eight Kings, Kingsgrave Road, general condition garage. Fourteen seventy Color Price Road, inoperable vehicles. Eight two thirty-seven Lincoln Street, the same thing. Fifty-nine forty-four, Larry Chase also.
Okay, our van report, we collected thirty-two dollars, drove a hundred and thirty-one miles, we skipped ten. We've been shot one, total of eleven. We also only have to be up there to the day that we have a new driver's name. We thought it was staying. Not yet. Ken Buhat, I know he is. Okay, we have a new driver. And that's a rarity, having a new driver. Ken Buhat, he's on his own now, ready to go. So we're really grateful that we have another one pending.
Yeah, we just have your story.
So we have some people driving the van. So that's, that's good to have new people and really appreciate you, Ken Buhat, stepping forward.
Thank you. What I'd like to do, we've got a special presentation, then before we get there, we'll get a couple of the hosts. Thank you guys. I think we're the whole business, too. We'll hold off on the new business. At this time, we'll come to new business. But at this time, if there's any other comment, wasn't on the agenda, this would be an opportunity to address these more. What I would like you to do is speak loud so that everyone can hear you, chief with the microphone. And then give us your name and then your location. This is your virtual option presence. Please.
So Manna Murphy, I'm your building library manager. And I just want to mention that the June twenty-second block party, Prairie Street Block Party is well on its way. I'm excited that trustees want to get off that tonight block party. And the church is having their sacrament show also starting at ten. We have a lot of competing organizations, the car crews, and we're going on a parade starting at eleven. The library, we're having the touch and truck going throughout the day, a magic show at eleven, a musical performance at two o'clock. And just lots of other things going on. I'm so excited that there are businesses and organizations in our community that just made me really be.
Do you think they wrote too long?
Yes, our people pay for it. It's a show that.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you for taking the lead. That sounded like involved a lot of people. The more people that are involved, the more complicated it gets.
Right. We've contacted a lot of our businesses in the community for the touch and truck. And a couple more people have to participate this year, but they're on the list for next year, so.
Thank you. Great for putting that up. Thanks. Any other public comments, please? Name and location.
Murray Longley, a little bit Second Street. I want to tell the fire department chief, thank you very much. You guys do a great job. And chief, that'd be retirement. That'd be retirement. You do a hell of a job and we're going to miss you. Question is, police department, they do a great job. I have no complaints there, although I have a question. Why do they sit on sixty-two and eighty-two when they have the touch, they're supposed to patrol? Which I have talked to various officers and they have so many, they have so many miles they have to cover. I understand they have a lot of mileage to cover. I understand you're burning gas. But when you're burning gas, sitting there, burning gas, saying you're driving down the road, checking cars, checking people out. Second Street is like a speedway. I had one down twenty, I called a mark this morning. I'm going down Second Street, twenty-two miles an hour. A guy coming down the street, hell bent for election behind me. Pulls up behind me, blows the horn, and takes off around me like hell bent for election. We get down to the stop sign. He's there stopped at the stop sign on the phone. I mean, why? You know, and when I, when I asked to have the officer down, we have an officer here. John, he's done a terrible job. He come down, a lot of times he checked out the area, right? Given times, seven fifteen in the morning, seven thirty. It's like clockwork. They have the bus to fix kids up at the corner. And that lady speaks like one on the style. And I even give you the address, where they are. I understand you can't join until you catch them, but the point being is heads up, there they are, you know? So I guess I'm just, oh, funny daddy complaining, but I do have a question. Why do they sit on sixty-two and eighty-two?
They sit all over. We have extra patrols on sixty-two because of the intersection change. So a lot of that area, seeing them a lot just to make sure, safety wise, because we have all those concerns with that up there. So a lot there. You know, we hit the areas where you're having the crashes.
Okay.
We catch the speed complaint areas as well, but they are all.
Well, I understand. I also talked to a couple of officers and I talked to trustee some time ago. And they said, quote unquote, the reason why they're, they're out there checking, but they have a lot of mileage to cover. They have a lot of touch to cover. They says, quote unquote, that they have to cover the touch of sixty-two and eighty-two because taxpayers, well, taxpayers are paying. The touch doesn't cover the plots knowing sixty-two. They don't cover the plots knowing eighty-two. Yet, I, I can't get a, are they training for state highway patrol or what's the deal? That's what I can't understand.
I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. I might be an objection. Just basically, we will try to get some additional visible coverage to that area.
Okay.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
We'll continue to talk about it. We've had other concerns. Thank you. Appreciate your voice. Any additional public comments?
It's kind of a question. As far as the flag that was placed.
Did you give us your name, location?
Sorry, male surgery and a warrant chair. The flag was replaced at the cemetery. How long was this there until you guys came off?
Do I?
And if someone would have one missing or something come off, can we call you to have them replaced? Okay, I, every year, I feel like my grandfathers or my uncles, they come, one of them ends up being missing at some point in time.
Do they initially get one though?
They do initially get one, but at some point, I don't know why or.
Yeah.
I feel like it's every year.
If you're in a cemetery during the day, when you guys are there, they have flags, they don't get one.
Okay.
Or if you call me, I can reach out and get your flag.
Okay, great, perfect. And then the second thing that I have is in regards to my neighbor across the street. I hate to, I hate to bring it up. There's been some issues with him in the past. He does have some issues with this property. And I'm just wondering, is, have you guys been up on him?
No, is, can I ask you, is it reoccurring?
So, I mean, it's constant. I mean, if you, I don't know when the last time was you actually physically walked there. He's actually built. actually physically walked there, he's actually built a fence along with that to the property at this point now, to put these signs.
Well, part of our, not, not defense, but part of our property maintenance code, is that if things are behind a fenced area to a certain degree, they're allowed.
Right.
But also, as part of the court order that we, took us ten years to get, it stipulated that he is, at, at any time, he's not allowed to revert back.
Right.
It wasn't just to get rid of what had accumulated.
Right.
So we have the ability through the court order to go back in his property, and we can talk to Pete, this is the first I, I kind of glance when I go by, the trustees by the court order are not allowed.
Right, I don't know how they walk from the, the driveway to their home. There is so much from that area going toward their home, where he put that.
Fence.
That, not that fence, but he put in a, I don't know if it's like a building garage type thing, it's some type of building garage, and things lined up in it, but there's just junk and garbage from the driveway all the way back in.
Oh, I'll mention, we'll take, we'll take our code officers not here, that's what is responsibility, so.
Right.
Make it swear.
Yeah, and then, of course, you know, his yard, I mean, I need to say it, but he doesn't, he maintains only a portion of it, um, he doesn't maintain any of the front, and like the area in the front where that retain wall is basically falling toward the road, it's just weeds. I mean, they have to be at least this, this tall.
I'll, I'll make a note of it later, and I'll give, I have to get. Thank you. We understand the first place, we'll break with you. The court order, we, we need to follow, we will, thank you. Any additional public comments?
Chief Wery, Amy Boyle, just a question for the administration. With the possibility of Washington being in Ohio with marijuana, is there any, has there been any construction, any, any, about the possibility of dispensaries coming, or the township?
Well, I can, I can tell you that I, I tried to get ahead of it a little bit with our prosecutor, because I don't know if you're aware, but, uh, Mr. Smith is, I'm sure, uh, trustees many years back have a resolution on the books, uh, on medicinal marijuana dispensaries not being allowed to be in Brooklyn. That, that, so, I, in turn, got ahold of the prosecuting attorney and said, does that, uh, also affect the recreational marijuana dispensaries? And he said, no, those are two separate issues, but I know, as far as the research that I'm doing is, I think the state, I think it's June seventh, they're gonna make some type of, they, they're gonna come through the legislature, some type of groundwork, but I think they're gonna do dual licensing, so, they're gonna go to the companies now that have medicinal, and allow them to be registered for recreation. So if that being the case, if somebody's looking, the, the medicinal end wouldn't allow them to put a dispensary in Brooklyn. Now, we haven't discussed it as the board of trustees, as far as what our stance is. Uh, I will tell you that I did get approached by somebody last week that wanted to know what our zoning goals were, of course, they didn't know we weren't zoning, and they were looking at the possibility, they mentioned Bay Street, whether they pronounced it wrong, major law ring or something. But, uh, they're, they're, there's somebody looking, and, and to be quite honest with you, they may look at a community that doesn't have some. Uh, so, it's in its infancy, it really isn't, the state law hasn't, it, it's a law, it's been voted on, but the guidelines haven't been really established, so, uh, but we're prepared, and I think if that comes to play, I would be one to say that we need to have public meetings for several reasons. Regardless of whether somebody's for or against marijuana, Brookfield Township as a rule, one thing I respect is, trustee, like it or not, is the residents have voted numerous times not to have zone. To me, that tells me they, they don't want us to tell them what to do with their property. So, for us to make a, I, I think we should get public input, for us to make a, we do one and we don't want to make that statement without some feeling of the public, I think we at least throw it to the public to, to weigh in.
Good question, very good question, but we've been at Leno for a number of months, and we're just, very good one.
Well, we're right on the state line, so.
Any additional? Yes, sir. Name and location.
Yes. Richard Cameron, North State Line Road, well, we have a situation in our area where our neighbors moved two horses into a small mall, and they've got out two or three times, and run up to our yard, tore it up, never heard a word from them. And had a police officer over there, he come over, never addressed me with his name or card, took what I had to say, wanted to know where the property land was, I told him, and that's been about four weeks ago, and I haven't heard anything. That tent over there is too small for two horses. The piles of manure over there is getting in months, and I just wondered if there's something that can be done, or go out and get somewhere else.
And you.
Yeah, yeah. And I second that, I'm current back when I lived right next door to them, and they stalled my entire yard up with their horses, and so far, nothing's been done about it.
So they're ridding out on you.
Yeah, they did put up new fencing after the third time, um, and we complained, and they knew we complained, and, uh, so far, they haven't got out again, but they're not, they claimed they were gonna fix our yards, but we haven't seen, so.
I am just a pressure concern, I did get these sections of the revitalized, we gave me, talk to Pete, and, uh, it's a little gray area, it's definitely a fence, it's kinda, I saw a fence, I live near, three more of our strengths.
Right.
So it, it's pretty up for interpretation, and, uh, I talked to, I'm going in, our new police team to come, uh, we may have to have another business, we have to maybe run around and talk in more detail, uh, but, but there's no zoning, you know, right, you can do two.
Also, there's horses. Also along the lines of a code officer checking things out. Two doors over from me, we got old carnival, they got carnival rides and all kinds of stuff, all of that in their yard.
Just recently?
Yes, like within the last, like, three months.
So three months, so.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not really sure who it is, but.
We, we could, there, there, there's some, if we can do with that, as far as our property management, Mark Smalley, I guess, we'd definitely explore that.
We will, but it's, it's not a pretty science. But thank you for your patience, you know, I know.
And I want to tell you one other thing, where they have their fence, according to what I've been told, it's way past the property line, where the, they have this fence in for their horses. So somebody ought to check that out, because them animals aren't getting a fair trade.
If you guys call animal welfare league or any, do you mean, did you animal welfare league or any, people to help, or charity, anybody to check up on them? Now, it could be a different pronunciation.
She's asking, did, did you call animal welfare?
No, I did not.
And, yeah, any of that, if you look up, that, if the aspect that are contained, and there's newer everywhere, maybe that's the animal you can go clean up.
They're, they're, they're a bunch of parts.
They're, they're getting loose, they, they can be sighted through the animal's body.
Yeah, so that's what we were told, but they got loose like two times, and we didn't know it, but we followed the holes all through our yard, and by that time, you couldn't report them, but we were told by Brooklyn Police that if we were reporting all three times, there could possibly be some inside from uncontrolled, very.
They have some type of, of arms.
They do, it's, I mean, it's, it's a nice, it's actually nice, I don't know if it's big enough for the horses, but it's, it's nice, I guess. I mean, they're nice enough horses, and it looks like they'll be taken care of, not controlled, I guess.
We will stay on topic, we'll get Pete to visit, and, uh, yeah, and sure.
And Chief Fostino, congratulations.
Thank you.
What's your address?
Thank you all for your service.
Thank you.
What's your?
Is it nine sixty? Uh, what's your address?
Nine oh six.
And mine's eight nine, eight nine six. Eight nine six.
I'll, I'll pick it.
Any, anything to come, any additional comments? Just, we're having a break, we have a tablet, and, uh, you know.
When Tabitha's on her way up, those of you that have come to our meetings, I've heard of State Tabitha Dixon, she was a film and physical officer, uh, last month, but she does a lot for our township, she like the, uh, the Irish kind of getting things organized and moving forward, so she's a big player.
So, thanks Chief Lasbey, and. So, so Chief is famous for his PowerPoints, so we can send a small PowerPoint.
Well, I see. Can you see it?
I want to get a picture of you, and he actually did not know about this until today.
Where you probably went with the bin?
Should've called me, I got some real.
Don't be involved.
So, nineteen eighty-five, this was his thirty-year picture. Chief, your old left shot?
It's like.
What year was that?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five? That was oh three?
Since the arrest filter?
That's when you got arrested.
Yeah. That's when he did all your hiring.
Yeah, Tim and a couple of these. Tim, is that he here?
Yeah, that is Ron Man. He, yeah, Tim Lattes, that's you, you still in the best. I'm a person, if what else is in there, I can't get far away from here.
Come on over.
Yeah, no, that's right, me, on it, there, deep, yeah. That's what you used to say. So, Bessie was dispatcher, two thirds of dispatcher, that.
But I did steal a couple of your slides from yours.
I know.
So, January twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-seven, the point of Chief, started in February twenty-five, left in September, eight five weather storm, recorded models of the ninety, then it's full time in ninety-one, and afterwards, detective in January twenty-five. He has family history of law enforcement. Chief, would you like to explain your family history?
Uh, it goes back the way, so, uh, also nineteen, nineteen ninety-six, I agree, all the rules, we see from the young town, uh, Dan Rose Burke, who's in Bethmore, is part of a, I think, Burdys, was, uh, sheriff of Longley County, then you go to Grandpa, he was the deputy sheriff, uh, mom's the deputy sheriff, his dad, assistant, but also, a lot of family history, I think, I'll be, I'm a little, my son's heart is electric.
And then, we have personal file, and the only man in file is one and only other man in this file.
Is it?
Only one, and it's kind of a silly one.
That goes outside of the car.
Yes, he was outside the car, didn't let them know he was outside of the car. And I know there's a lot of completeness to some of his accomplishments, he acquired the A E S, secondment department, state of Ohio, even though it did not start in Easter right time, continued Easter right time, so about three o'clock. Safety Awareness Night started with National Light Out, and then, whatever the Safety Awareness Night, like, we did income, which generates us extra income, school resource officer, the temporary, pretty government surplus program, which gives us.
So.
Yes. And then the numerous grants can be here, maintaining the city, while your K I has been part of the system, so it's easy for us. He will be the fourth one to retire. And then. But this is his, and I'll go, he's been in one license, what, week twenty-two, was it, Sethzer, we saw, it's twenty-two, it's right on the board?
About.
He has twenty-two, one, three months, he's got.
The character thing, I did that, I ended our history thing, I told the officer, and then the character, because that started with, I had an idea for that, um, boss, the trustee, she got, she said, oh, I got a guy, and she made that all come with permission for us, so those of you hanging out, we have all, all time staff.
You join us here, you still have arrest power, so Tabitha, you might be in trouble.
Yeah, I thought I was gonna get fired today.
Well, uh, so, we have a token of appreciation that we would like to share with you on behalf of the board of trustees, and all of the citizens in Brookfield Township, and police, fire, and, uh, all of our whole community, so, would you, could you read that, uh?
I'll try to read it, um, so real quick, uh, background on this, the department heads and everybody that we spoke about, got together, we would like to present this to you, I was able to design some stuff, and we worked with the school and the maker space, and then we were able to print this and the stuff inside, so, another awesome collaboration, but, uh, it's this police chief, Daniel, Daniel Fostino, Brookfield Township, thank you for your years of dedicated service to our community, and a certificate, um, it just says, we all wish you the very best with your future, your wisdom, and commitment that have inspired those who follow you, will be remembered for many years to come. We thank you for your dedicated and selfless service to the residents of Brookfield Township, Trow County, and the state of Ohio, and it, it shows the day we're going to retire. So if you open it, because we couldn't get your badge off of you. We had the idea of making out like just a backup badge, you could keep it in there, but, um.
The real one can build it.
Yeah, the real one could go in there, but this is just our present.
I believe it's, uh, thirty-three.
The flag flew over the station twelve hours, uh, and Jamie worked very hard to get it folded for you, so, um, real team effort from everybody, and thank you for, for letting us make this happen, and thank you for leaving.
Thirty-three years, twenty-seven, I believe, as chief, correct? That's, that's a record, where's our new officer at?
And you guys, yeah, everybody, you have a camp, I want to go down.
Smile, please. We will, uh, go back for a few things to close the meeting, and then we'd like everyone to stick around for some, uh.
Congratulations.
Goodies.
Okay, I believe, uh, that's the end of new business, something else for new business, I'll do that. Trustee comments, uh, you think we see him? Find you like that, we will consider.
Please do. Chief, I know we, I don't think you can be said enough, uh, one thing I learned when I became a trustee, somebody said, you want to see somebody that knows his budget, was Chief Fostino. Um, Chief Fostino was, was a numbers guy, he knew wherever Penny was in his department, and he also was a, is a great police officer, which, uh, he'd given a lot to our community, and I'm glad to say I was part of a, a little bit of being a forceful user. I appreciate everything you've done for our community, and, uh, you will be missed.
Shannon?
I'm kind of with the, the certificate, I nailed it. You have been a wealth of knowledge, so.
And last, our position as trustees are twenty-four seven, if they're on vacation time, we have to, we have to call them, we miss you, we'll call you back, there's nothing but accolades, he's a gentleman, he is Brookfield in and of, so, we're gonna miss you, uh, hope you don't go very far, and you come back often, and, uh, thank you for all you've done, great work. Okay, uh, any meetings coming up?
We have the twenty-second, or something, you're gonna be at, you know.
Yep, I put it up on website, I trust. Yep, I put up my website, I'm a trustee in normal times.
Ten to noon.
Yeah, we, we.
No, it's twenty-second, two.
Yeah, we're meeting four thirty this one, so there's no person else.
Can I just say one language where we go, uh, just a little public service announcement? The banquet hall renovations have been completed, uh, for anybody who's watching, uh, on, uh, line, we've asked that, we just kind of try to take care of it, and spend a lot of money, our money down there, we just want to try to keep it nice, no tape on the walls, kind of leave it as you found it, uh, we're getting it to, to rental season, so it's gonna be used, but, uh, that's just one thing, Ellen, no.
Jamie?
I have one comment. Did you guys sign that comment?
It was hard to believe, I listened to my second. Yeah, that was a lot.
That's it? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a question.
Any or none, again, uh, we have a little, thanks to Tabitha, we have a case, please, so, do knock around, and, please, till the case comes, please.
So, you go ahead and remember Tabitha.
Yeah.